Yeah, he does. He does.
Hey, I have five thirty-one P M. Call this meeting to order officially five thirty-one P M. Would you please do roll call?
Mayor Raton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Perry. Councilmember Kathy.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Councilmember Oliveris.
Here.
Councilmember Sarnes.
Here.
Councilmember Melton.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance following my invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads while you remain standing. Almighty God, we invite you to be amongst us this evening as we meet to discuss and make decisions regarding the city of Rockdale. Guide us with your wisdom that we might lead our community in a way which reflects your best for all of our citizens. We especially pray for our first responders, asking for your protection over them as they serve and as the new school year begins. We pray for your blessings for our students, teachers, staff, and administrators. May our words and actions this evening and every day be a reflection of your kindness and grace. We pray these prayers in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Before I get into citizens communications, I would like to send out a reminder for our citizens and everyone that Rockdale ISD classes start tomorrow. Means our kiddos are back in school. Means our school zones will be back active and enforced. School zones are active from seven A M. to eight thirty A M. and from three P M. to four thirty P M. As a reminder, if you're in a school zone, you're required to follow posted school zone speed limit, don't be on a cellphone, and to stop and yell right away at all times whether in active school zone time or not if a student is crossing a marked crossway. We want to have a safe and successful year for all of our staff and all of our students, and we as citizens can help attribute to that by being safe in the school zones. With that, Chief.
I said, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir. Chief, did you want to add anything?
Uh, we're going to be on force, uh, monitoring the school zones and, uh, I'm going to expect to see a warning about Asian in the next few days.
Just what we're doing is, hey, we've seen your cars on Ackerman. Tremendous job out there. I mean, there's that. That's like people going seventy, eighty miles an hour down the street, and they've made a big difference out there.
Okay, moving on to citizens communications. Do we have anybody signed up? This is the only one? Okay. Judge Whitmire, how are you, sir?
I'm good. How are y'all?
We're doing great. Thank you.
All right. It's good to see everybody. Um, I still can't remember what I wanted to ask you today, so. I've had something on my head I needed to ask him all day. I walk up here and then I can't remember what it is, so. Um, just real briefly, what I wanted to talk to you about tonight, and I meant to call Tim earlier and try to get this on the agenda, but I'll call Tim later and talk to him about it some more, is, uh, County Road, uh, so years and years ago, cities would annex right up to a county road, and then the county road was still technically the county's road. And so they changed that law. They didn't like grandfather. They changed that law. I don't know how long ago they changed it. Some cities know, some cities don't, and, and obviously Rockdale knows this, so it's not a big deal. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but that's how it ended up happening. So Cameron was like, Cameron was actually like the worst abuser of this law ever. So Ballpark Road, if you know where that is, going out to the Ballpark Road is absolute rubbish. The city annexed one side of it, a mile and a half, and never annexed across it. So when they changed that law, then all of a sudden that became City Road, but everybody still counts it as a county road. So we actually have a grant. We're going to fix it and then turn it, and then the city's going to have to take it over. So here we have three roads that are of concern and have been brought up to me by numerous folks. It's, uh, three oh five, which is the Ballpark Road here. And I'll tell you honestly, anytime somebody calls me, tells me about a road, I'll go drive it. It can never be, and it never has to this day, been worse than my road where I live. And, and Commissioner Neal does a great job, but there's about five places on my road that there should have never been a road built, but those are old, old roads. Nothing you can do about it, so. But with that said, um, three oh five, I'd, I'd, it probably needs some work, but it's not life-threatening work by any means. It's not a terrible road. I mean, I coached softball and baseball for years here and never had a problem with it. Could use some dressing up. It's not bad. But three oh eight, which is the road that goes behind where climate control is, where abiding choice is, that one needs a lot of work. Um, it's a patchwork of, of asphalt all over it, and then at the end, right when you come on the east side of it, just before you get on seventy-seven, it's just, it's terrible. So, uh, and then, and then Eighth Street is the other one, and Eighth Street, if you don't know where that is, it's on the southeast side of town. It's really kind of a farm trail more than a road. It's, it's in, it's in really bad shape. That's the worst of them. So, uh, anyway, we had a meeting, and Commissioner Payne, who, he's not here tonight, but I'll speak for him anyway. It's easier to speak for him when he's not here because I can promise more that way, but, um, he, uh, he's willing to work with the city to put some material down there and to do the work, to kind of get it leveled out, help with the material, not put all the material down. But, but he'll do the, the, the heavy lifting on the work, on the labor part of it, to get it leveled for everybody and get it much better than where it is right now, both of those roads. But then after that, we'll do what we did in Cameron and turn that over, and then that'll, that'll be for y'all to handle past that point. I think the, the, the hardest part's going to be leveling three oh eight and keeping it because it is pretty much sand over there. It's not, uh, real stable. Not three oh eight, Eighth Street. Three oh eight's paved most of it, but it's patched up over what looks like twenty or thirty years worth of patchwork, so. But, uh, and, and like I said, I meant to call Tim earlier and get this on the agenda so we could talk back and forth on this. But, um, because I didn't do that, I'll just, you know, make this offer now so that we can come and help to get those roads fixed up so that it's serviceable, especially three oh eight where abiding choice is, because a lot of people go in and out of there, and, and it's a pretty high traffic area. It's becoming more and more of a high-traffic area because a lot of people go in and out of there. I don't know how many people per day, but they have quite a few folks that go in and out of there for business reasons and stuff. And they're obviously doing a good job and helping with the mark and everything else, so we want to make sure that we take care of them as best we can. So anyway, that's our offer. The, the county's willing to help with the labor on that side. We do a lot of this. I mean, and we have a interlocal, so we can, we can do that kind of stuff. We do it with Thorndale. We do it with Milano, too, when we need to. And, uh, so we're willing to do it with Rockdale, too, so. That's all I really needed, wanted to say, um, and I still don't remember what I needed to ask the chief, so I'll have to call him later. Whenever I remember eventually at some point, I'll remember that, but anyway, uh, I appreciate the time, and, uh, we'll talk to y'all later about that. Do what?
You know, I talked about me naming one of those roads.
Yeah, it, it is going to become one where you, where you probably need to rename those roads. Um, whenever those roads get annexed into a city or they get into the city, you really need to rename those. And I mean, there's lots of, I think, folks that, uh, you can name some of those roads after, especially the Ballpark Road up into where the ballparks are. There's several folks that have worked really hard over the years for the, uh, especially the softball girls and stuff, you know? So don't do it, don't do it for me because, you know, we never won anything. I mean, our girls were like the Rockdale Rednecks one year, so, you know, we had great names, but we didn't win much, so.
Well, your, your offer, Judge, is timely. If our new proposed budget gets approved, uh, we have been there going after five hundred thousand dollars to, uh, commit towards street and road repair.
And I don't think it would take much for, uh, for Commissioner Payne to be able to address those. Like I said, Eighth Street's going to be the more difficult one because it's so narrow and, and it needs some widening. Three oh eight's not, that, that's not a heavy lift to make that, uh, really good, especially on that east side of that road, so.
Does three oh eight, oh eight need more attention than three oh five?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So three oh eight and Eighth Street, that does.
Three oh five's real serviceable. It's, it's, it's not horrible by any means. It needs some work. It needs some work sooner rather than later just for upkeep purposes, because every time it rains, it, it has that tendency to mess it up more. But right now, it's, it's, it's not terrible at all, but three oh eight's, three oh eight needs some serious attention, so.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
Uh, it was brought up several meetings back during some citizen communications regarding concerns and needs of County Road three oh eight, so it's been on our mind.
Yeah.
Obviously, and is a concern.
So, but we're here to help how we can, so just, you know, get in touch with us and let us know, and I'll holler at you about it, Tim. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, y'all, and I got another meeting that I got to go to because, you know, my schedule never ends.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks, y'all.
Of being no other citizens communications, we'll move on to presentations. First is a presentation from Rachel Owens for Casa Mylum County. I don't see Rachel. I guess we will jump over that and go to Judge Vaughn here regarding the youth diversion program. Erby?
When I was appointed in November, the first thing the state said is youth diversion, and it had to be done by twenty twenty-five, and we managed to accomplish that, uh, got a program put together. We, uh, paired up with, uh, the county, all the J P. Courts and all the municipal courts together, and we're, we're on the same program. All of us do the same thing. The county went to, um, the juvenile probation people, went to the county and said, we, we've got this program that this company's offering to help the youth figure out a, a path that they can follow. It's, uh, using virtual reality, and, uh, they do things like teach decent mechanics, welding, cosmetology, um, any, any kind of a, a work-type program to get them involved in something, to get them to where they'll not end up in our court system. And, uh, the county agreed to a three-year contract. I, I'm quite in favor of the three-year contract. I want to do something like a one-year contract for us just to see if it works. And if it works later on, we'll come back and try to, to do something, you know, a little bit different, maybe for a little longer period of time. It's going to run about six thousand dollars, and we have in our, um, what's it called? I got it here somewhere. The, uh.
Court restricted funds?
That's it. Court restricted funds. We have money for the youth diversion program. Uh, basically, the money comes from five dollars per ticket, goes into that fund, and ours has been sitting there for quite a while, so we have some buildup there that we could use to, to cover this one-year program to see if it's going to help our youth. The youth is what's going to take care of us when we get old, and I'm getting old pretty quick, so I'm looking for good ideas to help, you know, solve this problem. Um, and I'm just throwing it out there to see if y'all would be okay with doing that.
Judge, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm a little concerned that it's recommended three years and we're taking it down to one year. Is one year enough to really know if it's working or not? Maybe there's the wrong staff that's working with this. Maybe, I don't know. I just think that a year seems like a short period of time to either do something that seems this worthwhile.
Well, I, I just, I hate to spend that much money because it's, it's, it's six thousand a year, and I hate to jump out there and say we want three years and then kind of find out it's not going to work right. And our youth diversion program, now we have ten youth that are in, in our programs, and, uh, uh, that's not a lot, but, I mean, with one year, we could probably just figure out if it's going to be feasible for us to use it again. Uh, the virtual reality is pretty neat. It's got the little goggle things, and you put them on, and you, you do welding, you do nursing skills. I mean, it's, there's a lot of different ones they put together, and it's very realistic. I mean, I got one of the things that I use for, uh, ping pong, and believe me, the table's not there when you throw your hand down on it. I mean, you'll end up on the floor. At least I did.
So if we do it one year, and we determine that one year is a success, will the cost have increased?
That I don't really know. Um, uh, I, I just feel like maybe the, the one year would be the best for us just to make sure it works. I, I don't want to throw the money out there and, and then kind of find out it's not going to work exactly the way we want it to, uh, and then we done wasted our money for the next few years of something that's not really panning out.
What, what's the measurable in this? How do you measure if it's working or not? How do you, how, how's that determined?
Well, the, the way it was explained to me by the people that have this program is that you get them involved in something to where it, it, they take an interest, and if they take that interest, then you just keep following it up with it, and they can either go through school to get the stuff. I mean, uh, um, it wouldn't be the virtual reality that actually take classes to, to aim their stuff in this direction. Uh, it's, it's pretty neat little concept. I, I really feel like the school district sort of, sort of look into it also, because, I mean, it, it, there, it helps you develop an idea of what kind of job skill you might want.
So you said the county opted for three years. We're opting for one year. What, I don't, what does that mean? If, if, if Ward over here is in trouble in the county, he can go through the county's program, but Brad's in trouble in the city of Rockdale, he goes to the city's program?
Well, we're all in the same program together. Uh, the, the youth diversion is, is the same for all of us, because we put it together for all the, all the, uh, judges to use. Um, basically, though, uh, with it being the J P. Courts, um, that they, uh, there's four of them, and, and they throw their, all their money into it, and I just don't feel like we need to throw all our money into it at one time, wait and see if it's going to develop right. Uh, the juvenile probation people's want it pushed for the three years. Uh, I'm sort of just figuring for one year and seeing what happens.
You said there's four courts, Rockdale, uh, four J P. Courts?
Four J P. Courts. Then you have Thorndale, Buckholz, and Cameron. So all, all of us, eight courts altogether, we're all on the same program as far as working it. Uh, I just feel like for this program, maybe just a one-year trial to see if it's going to work right before we jump out there with both feet and find out it's not going to work.
So it's four, four courts and the county? Yes. It's, it's for the county precinct, J P. Offices, and then the municipal.
Courts.
In each city.
And there's four of them.
My question, though, then, is kind of tagging on with Lynn. If we didn't have the program after a year, and someone gets in trouble in Rockdale, do they just get funneled over to the county program? And if so, does the county program have a limit on how many, you know, people they can have in the program? Does that make sense?
So that's a good comment, but I guess the question would be to you, Judge Vaughn. If, uh, someone gets in trouble and they're handled, their case is handled in your court, does that automatically commit them to the youth diversion program through our city, through our municipal court?
Well, I've got to deal with the Giddings right now. I've got a, a youth that was in trouble over here, but they live in Giddings. Well, uh, for them to come this direction is a little tough, so we've got to figure out how we can pair up with Giddings to get them to do a program through Giddings to where they don't have to travel. Uh, that's one of the main reasons why we went to the juvenile probation. They got a grant where they can go to the, the individual's house and do the, whatever programs they need to do, uh, at the individual's house, and it doesn't cost the family anything for travel or anything like that.
So in regard to the, the program, would you administer the program here locally? Would that be through the court?
It'd be through, well, it'd be through juvenile probation, but it'd be done at the juvenile center. That's where they have an office here close, and, uh, they'd, they'd take the kid.
The individual over there that's operating the J P.? The J P. Court there?
Well, it's, it's, uh, one of the probation, uh, juvenile probation officers picks up the kid, would take him through the juvenile, uh, justice, uh, jail over here because they have an office there. They would do the program there, and then they take them back home, so there's no, no expense for the family to travel with them any, any direction at all.
And what is the annual cost for the city of Rockdale?
For, for this program?
Yeah.
It'd be about at six thousand dollars for one year.
Judge, Judge Vaughn, I have a question on a lot of projects, a lot of projects. The money is in the setup. Does it get cheaper in year two or year three, or is it six thousand each year?
Well, the, the county signs six thousand each year, so, uh, I, I don't know.
Does, does that go down?
I don't think so.
And, and we actually then pay the county to administer that program?
Well, we'll be paying juvenile justice to, to administer the program. We'll pay for the, actually, you buy the headset, and then the program comes with each headset.
Yeah. That's how those two.
That company took, and juvenile probation will actually have the, the headset and the program to, to run. Uh, but it's, it's, it, it would, basically, the headset would belong to us.
So, excuse me, um, we, each, each city court can do what they feel is right for their city, each. Everybody's in one big program.
Right.
We're signing on individually as a city of Rockdale for one year, two year, three year, and the city of Thorndale, Cameron, they're all doing the, the same thing. The county has said we want three years.
Right.
What have, have you?
The other gate, the other municipal courts, I'm not really sure what they want to do yet. I mean, uh, uh, it, it's, I went to the meeting and watched the, the program. It's pretty, pretty neat. I mean, uh, uh, and, and the way our youth are nowadays, I mean, you, you give them some virtual reality, something, and they just go plum nuts over it. I mean, they, they enjoy it. I mean, uh, so, uh, I, I think it would probably work, but I just don't want to jump off in, in with both feet and then later on find out it's not going to work like we think.
Is that six thousand dollars per entity utilizing program, so eight courts, essentially forty-eight thousand dollars a year, correct? And how do we, how do you, as a judge in your court, plan to, what metrics will you use to measure success or not success?
Well, it's, it's coordinated if the, if the youth returns back to the court because they, they are back in trouble again. What we're trying to do is keep them from coming back to the court so they don't have a criminal record before they even get out of high school. And believe me, I, I've got four of them now that are thirteen years old that, that were heading down that path, and we got them in a diversion program now. They don't have the reality thing to show them a different path of what they can do, so, uh, uh, I think the county's supposed to get their system in, uh, August, the end of August, so, uh, that, that's when their, theirs will start.
And when do you need, uh, move, move ahead with one year, two year, three? Are you looking for guidance from council to say, let's go one year, let's go two year?
Sort of.
Uh, when do, when do you, one question I have is, when do you need that by, and could you get us some information to say, uh, it's six thousand dollars a year, uh, for years one, two, and three right now? But if you don't do, then it's going to jump up to eight or nine, uh, for year two or year three? It's going to help me make an educated decision of.
Okay. Well, I can get the information. I mean, the, the fact, I'm pretty sure I could probably get the people to come over and actually give you a, a little demonstration of how it works. I mean, they're, they're.
What is the program called? Actually called, is it something we can look up?
It's called Transfer V R. Um, it's, it's, uh, they're based out of New York, but they, they've got, uh, uh, school districts here and, and workforces here in Texas, uh, just a bunch of them. And, uh, um, like I say, I think it would work, but like I say, I don't want to jump off of both feet and then it not work, and then we done wasted, you know, an extra twelve thousand dollars that we could have used maybe, uh, on a different type of program.
Sure, I can appreciate that. Counsel, any other questions for Judge Vaughn? I, I presume Judge Vaughn will be weighing your information and then evaluating it and coming back with a, a decision from council on participation for one year or for three years. Is that fair enough? We hear your recommendation of one year.
Is that something that has to come back to council, or we can, is that, that will actually come back to council, probably through an, an interlocal viewing of the county or the juvenile probation office? Was time on offer? My hearing didn't catch the name. Transfer the.
V R.
V R.
Virtual Reality.
Judge Vaughn, what's, what's the timeline on the decision?
Well, I think the county's expecting, uh, the, the juvenile department's expecting ones for the county to be in by August the thirty-first. Uh, they, they've been placed in order to get three, and, uh, it should be right around August the thirty-first is when they're going to get theirs. Uh, I figure we get pretty close to them, and then that way, if, if it works, we just fall into the, the program.
Is that something you could have us the information back before next week's special meeting?
I will either put it on the special meeting agenda. I'll give it to the judge and get more information. Probably talk to Judge Whitmire as well in the county youth probation, uh, youth probation office. See what I can put together. If not, it's going to have to be at the September meeting.
If we can get it for a special meeting, that'd be great. Very good.
Any questions? All right, y'all have the meeting.
I'm going to jump back up to presentation number one. I see Rachel is here now. Rachel, go ahead. For Casa.
Sorry, my children didn't come get my grandchildren, so I'm late.
Thank you.
My name is Rachel Owens with Casa of Mylum County. I'm currently the executive director of that entity. Um, are you guys familiar with what Casa is? Because I'll give you the spiel if you don't. Okay. Uh, so right now, currently, we have nine advocates. We need fifty advocates to cover all the cases that we have. We are growing slowly but surely. We have another training coming up on August twenty-fifth, where we have six signed up already, so that is more than what we have had in the past for each training. Um, we've got around about fifty-three hundred youth in the county, and over twelve hundred of them have been through the CPS system, so that's a lot more than our surrounding counties, uh, that our numbers are, just seem to be higher for our kiddos, uh, going through the CPS cases. Um, what I wanted to visit with you guys tonight, tonight is just tell you how we're doing, and we have, uh, had over thirty cases. Judge Youngblood started giving us cases this past February, marked a year, so about a year, not quite a year and a half, and we continue to get cases because obviously the CPS cases aren't going to stop, unfortunately. But what I wanted to visit with you about is, uh, the packet that I'm giving you, our big event called Taste of Mylum is coming up on September twentieth. It will be at Keesling Ranch this year. Last year, we had it at the Railfan Venue in Cameron. We had a good problem. We outgrew that venue, uh, the first, uh, time, so that's great. So we moved to Keesling. We want to have it in somewhere different in each area of the county or each town, because we serve all the kids in Mylum County, not just Rockdale kids, not just Cameron, not just Thorndale, or Buckholz. It's, it's all the kiddos. And so we're going to have it out there. There will be a U T V raffle. It'll be a, or a side-by-side, whatever term you want to use. Um, it's a four-seater this year. There'll be a gun raffle. We are, um, going to have some custom guns made that some folks are going to donate, and then the others that we will purchase. Silent auction, live auction, uh, Taste of My, I mean, um, Taste of Mylum, uh, David Hall and the other band will be playing, and he'll be emceeing, and just some awards for various, uh, advocates, like our longest advocate, and then just some community members that we wanted to thank. But that is what the sheets of paper that I just gave you are mainly about. If you have a business, there are different levels of sponsoring. If you would like to do that, you can also sponsor the U T V, or you can just show up and support us, but it's from six to ten. And the whole point of Taste of Mylum also is to showcase our smaller mom-and-pop businesses or just the businesses that we have in Mylum County. So if you have brick and mortar, you do it out of your kitchen. You have a food truck. It doesn't matter. If you want to be there to show what you've got, then that's great, so you pay thirty-five dollars to get in the door. You get to sample all of these things that only the people in Mylum County, uh, make. It's not McDonald's. It's not any entities like that, and, uh, it, everyone appeared to have a good time last year. We made, I think that eve, that evening, we made, I think it was around fifty-three thousand, and then after costs and all that, I think it was about thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand that we made last year. And we get grants, uh, the Victims of Crimes Act grant and the Human Health and Services grant, but whatever we get, we have to match that in fundraising. And so that's where we are at right now. I can talk all day long, so, but if you have questions, just let me know. And, I mean, we can't do this without the community, and without our advocates, we don't really exist. Um.
Is there, I, I've had somebody ask me, is there, is there different levels of advocates that somebody that's able to donate this much time and somebody else is able to donate this much time, or do you, is it, is it across the board?
It's straight across the board. Uh, we ask that after you go through the training that you are able to give ten hours a month, because that's, yeah, and that's, uh, one reason why Judge Youngblood really appreciates our advocates so much, where, and it's not CPS's fault, but their work, their caseworkers get to visit, you know, maybe an hour a month if they're lucky with each kid, where our advocates are spending ten hours, and they're where the kids came from, where the kids are placed, teachers, preachers, aunts, uncles, anyone who's had anything to do with this family, and our advocates, a lot of times, find family members. Because the people, they hate CPS because they took their kid, which it needed to happen, but you understand why they're upset with them, so they don't want to talk to them. So when our advocates come in, one of the things that they say is, we are here for reunification, and we are, if it's safe and possible. If not, then we're not. But one good thing is we get to do what's best for the kiddo. There's no boxes for us to check. We answer to Judge Youngblood. We don't have to check those boxes, you know, well, you know, it's been a certain time. We have to send that kid back home. No, we don't. It's not safe yet. Uh, we don't have those things to check, so, which is good for the kiddo and good for us. And then we, like I said, we answer to Judge Youngblood, and he asks us in court, the advocates, what their opinion is, and he so far has been in agreement with our advocates on what we feel should happen, simply because they're just able to spend more time. Like I said, that's not the CPS caseworker's fault. It's the system that's broken, not them, so.
What's the background of most of your advocates?
Oh, uh, we have farmers, schoolteachers. Uh, one was, uh, or currently worked in the grants department for the state. Some are retired, um, housewives. It's, it's everything, and it doesn't take any special training. I mean, well, it does to become an advocate, but as far as your background before that, you don't have to have four, five, or six degrees. It's anyone who wants to go through the training can pass the CPS background check and, um, the criminal justice or the criminal background check, so it can be anyone.
Are there individual sponsorship amounts that are different from the, this?
Uh, well, you can donate any amount you want, uh, but that, just the levels that are on there, um, was just that we, we had to differentiate somehow of how we were going to thank the people for sponsoring, so we broke it down that way, but, no, we'll take anything that anyone wants to give. And if you got any ideas on ways to make it better, I am always all ears because it's always going to be improved upon.
When'd you say you had another training coming up? When?
August twenty-fifth, and that'll be at your office.
We attended last year, and it was great. I remember there was a lot of food.
Yeah, I was super surprised.
It was, it was great time.
Because my poor board, it was their first time doing anything, and they're like, what if they don't come? I'm like, did you not see that baseball movie? If you, they'll, they'll come. They're going to come. But it, it was great, and like I said, growing out of that place was, that was a good problem to have. Yeah, we're expecting, we had between three hundred and fifty to four hundred people last year, and we're expecting over five hundred this year.
Well, good.
So it'll be alcohol also. We'll be there, uh, lots donated, and then there'll be a bar also, so, it's to alcohol to sample, too.
Counsel, any other questions, comments, feedback? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Moving on to, uh, our public hearings, I'm going to open the first public hearing at six oh two P M., conduct a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, uh, for the city of Rockdale. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I passed out some information. We have gone ahead and updated the budget, um, based on the, uh, information discussed last, at the last meeting. Um, we did, if you look on page, um, thirty-seven, um, actually, if you look on page thirty-six, um, we actually had, added some additional C I P. Funds, one for street reconstruction. Um, and in that includes the money from the tax note, um, and, uh, additional funding for street reconstruction next year, um, but it assumes the tax note being issued for the end of the year. And we also created a C I P. For Bridge Park and Fireman's Park, um, that grant application was submitted. I did not include the grant, grant revenue, um, and much of the project cost in here. We won't do that. We'll do a budget amendment after we find out about that, but this actually creates that, that C I P. Fund. Um, we also created on page thirty-seven a C I P. Fund for Rockdale Volunteer Fire Department Vehicles, um, where we actually will transfer in a hundred thousand dollars from general fund reserves. Um, I expect that that would earn some interest as well. I don't have any expenses in there. That will be cumulative, so that can be built up and added to in future years. Um, so that's basically the, um, the changes. I, I did go ahead also, um, and pass out, this is a sheet right here that talks about our fund balances. If you notice in the left-hand column in our general fund, um, the beginning year fund balance, we're estimating at three million one seventy-seven. Um, and with the budget that we are proposing, um, we will end up with a ending fund balance of two million six hundred and forty thousand. Um, our hundred and five-day reserve is a hu, a million six hundred and forty-seven, so we still have, um, a sizable fund balance over in reserve there. Uh, but I, I will point out that in this particular fund, excuse me, um, in, in this particular budget that's being presented, there is a large, um, amount of funding that is basically coming from reserves, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, so I would be cautious about spending more than what we have already proposed to do because of the fact that that, part of that could be necessary, um, next year as well, so. Um, and then, and then, and then on the second page of that, the debt service, or excuse me, the fund balance for our enterprise fund, water and sewer, uh, beginning this year, beginning the proposed year is at three million ninety-three thousand. Um, that'll drop down to two million four hundred and ninety thousand. Our hundred and five-day reserve is a million, uh, two thousand dollars, leaving a fund balance over and above that of a million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Um, so I also printed out this spreadsheet regarding our debt, debt service. Um, so on the first page of this, it shows, um, our total general fund debt service.
Were you on the big, the big one you printed?
Yes, of course. Our total principal and interest, uh, general fund is, uh, six, uh, it'll be six hundred and, um, seven hundred and five thousand dollars approximately between the two. Um, but this does include the principal and interest for the, uh, tax note that we are going to be talking about later tonight. On the second page includes all of our, our enterprise fund debt service that we're carrying currently. Um, between that, we have about one point, a little over one point two million dollars in annual debt service payment, um, and so this kind of shows where we're at right there. We'll point out that in our debt service fund balance, on back to the other page that I passed out, our general fund debts, uh, fund balance, general fund debt service fund balance, um, starts out the year at two hundred and sixteen thousand. Um, we really only need to carry about a hundred thousand dollars, which is recommended, um, for a fund balance in there, so we are using part of that, um, towards paying of the debt this year. And then in enterprise fund, our enterprise fund debt service, um, stands, well, stands at about a million four hundred and forty-nine thousand. So there's not, there is not a policy reserve amount, um, but we are using, you know, we may end up using part of that next year as well, so. Um, but this does everything that the council has asked, I think. It includes the funding for streets. It includes, uh, the new positions that we talked about, um, new vehicles. Um, it includes money, it includes funding for water and sewer master plan, um, as recommended by the comprehensive plan, um, moving forward, so, and that will be necessary in order to, uh, to take action on any kind of, um, impact fees that we might want to adopt, so.
And so on this sheet, the projected ending fund of twenty twenty-six is after you made the C I P. Adjustments.
That's correct.
In the budget, correct?
That's correct.
Are you comfortable mentioning, uh, the amount that you shared with us that is under the category of security?
What?
The, under the category of security?
The cameras?
Cameras, for cameras. Yeah, so that, that is in there also. Um, we added funding, and I, I think I mentioned last time that we added, I think, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget for security cameras. Um, there was already funding in there for water and sewer for security cameras, um, but I think that we also, we all are going to need, as we talked about last time, for the police department, city, all our parks. And the library.
Counsel, any other questions or comments for Tim? Counsel, any other questions or comments for Tim? There he says, citizens that would like to speak during this public hearing on the budget, proposed budget. Being known, I'm going to close this public hearing at six oh nine PM. Move to item four on the agenda, conduct a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and revenues from properties on the tax roll preceding tax year for the city of Rockdale, opening this public hearing at six ten PM. Tim?
Yeah, so we did advertise the public hearing for the higher tax, the maximum we could, the new revenue rate. But this budget is still proposing an eighty-five cent tax rate with a INS rate of one-point-one-six-zero-five-seven and an MNO tax rate of point eight, six-eight-nine-nine-four-three per hundred dollars of assessed value. That, those tax rates will generate sufficient funds to support this budget that's being proposed.
Counsel, any comments, questions? Tim, I do have something to say. I just want to thank you for working, you and your staff are working so hard on putting this budget, all this very detailed information together for counsel.
Well, it is a team effort, that's for sure.
I sincerely appreciate it. The work that you put together is very evident of your commitment to our citizens and trying to keep this tax rate not being raised this year. Is there any of our public here that would like to speak during this public hearing regarding item four on the public hearing agenda?
I would say not only being raised, keep it from being raised, but we've actually been able to put things into some funds that we haven't previously in the past, so.
Very true.
Being a little more frugal with the funds that we do have and we do collect.
I mean, I would say that the budget is not as conservative as I would like, as far as our revenue projections and our expense projections. So, you know, we will have to keep a very close eye on where we stand and how those come in.
I think the forward thinking on the streets and the fire, things we're going to have to have, that's going to be ongoing, very good policy. I mean, it's not like we're going to quit doing street work, or we're not going to need a fire truck at some point. So I think those are definitely good moves, and still being able to come into that threshold.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Once again, I'll give the opportunity for any public speech during this public hearing. I'm going to close this public hearing at six twelve PM. Going to move on to the consent agenda, counsel. You see the items presented to you on the consent agenda. I'll ask prior to the, asking for action on the consent agenda, if there's anything council would like to be pulled out of the consent agenda and moved into the regular agenda. Being known, I'll entertain action on the consent agenda as written.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
A motion, a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Any no discussion, we'll vote all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. All in favor, said motion, signify by raising your, motion passes. Prompted all a couple times down there. Moving on to our regular agenda, item ten, consider taking any necessary action on resolution regarding the extension of the bank depository comment, depository contract for city funds with Classic Bank for one year. Tim, you got this, or Roxanne?
I can go ahead and cover it, Mayor. Roxanne did all the heavy lifting on it in regard to that, but we have, we have had an ongoing contract with Classic Bank as our primary, as our depository, and they do offer a very competitive interest rate and continue to serve the city well. That contract was up for, expires at the end of this month, and so we looked at the possibility of extending it for a year. We can do that for three, potentially three, three more one-year extensions. And, you know, I don't know whether or not we'll go out for bid, but typically, when the city does this, and we do, would have done this when we first signed the contract, we would have gone out for bid to other banks locally, the potential act as our depository. But they have, they have served us well. We checked all the, make sure everything was, was correct and legal, and so a recommendation is to extend it for one year.
Counsel, any questions or comments regarding Tim's recommendation for item ten on the agenda? I'll entertain action on item ten of the agenda.
I make a motion that we extend the bank depository with the city, with Classic Bank, for one year.
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Any no discussion, we'll vote all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Item eleven, consider taking any necessary action approving an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of a city of Rockdale, Texas Limited Tax Note, with the principal amount of one million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for street reconstruction and park improvements. Tim?
Jennifer is here to present to counsel on this. I will tell you, I did speak with Mr. Barnes, our legal, our bond counsel, and this is an ordinance that actually can be adopted in one, in one reading, it doesn't require two readings per state law, that trumps our local charter requiring two readings. So it is, it is something that you can act upon tonight.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Jennifer Ritter was specialized public finance for the city's financial advisors, so we work with you on bond issues specifically. I passed around a little booklet here and to echo what your city manager's comments were, that is a typical question that we get asked about city charters and a double reading, and state law is pretty clear on that one, so you're fine with the one reading. So we went out about three and a half weeks ago with a competitive process where we sent out the terms of what this issue would look like for the city of Rockdale, let banks across the state of Texas and the nation bid on it competitively. Whoever had the lowest interest rate in theory would win. I say in theory, we'll go through here in a moment. In the first page of the attachment, we have, it's relatively small, but you can see the number of bids that we received, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine different banks across the, across the nation participated in this one. You can see interest rates ranging on the low side from a three-sixty-two all the way up to the upper, to mid-fours in terms of that rate. I'll point out here that the low bid actually was Chase Bank out of New York. They came in at a three-point-six-two percent non-callable, and then if you wanted the option to prepay this early, the interest rate was a little bit higher, which is what we'd specified in the bid specs, that they could bid it a couple of different ways. However, that interest rate from Chase was, we asked for bids back on Friday, you have to get your packet ready, you had to have this information. Most banks don't really want to hold the interest rate over the weekend and be subject to interest rate movement, but all the other banks on this page were willing to do that. They gave us the bid on Friday and said they would hold it through tonight. Chase wouldn't do that, they actually came back this morning with a slightly higher interest rate, so that bid is ineligible because they weren't willing to hold the rate, so they get, they get bounced out. The next bid is Classic Bank, obviously, on the, on the prior item as well. They were at a three-point-seven percent, that's non-callable, but this is under state law, a tax note is seven years. So it's probably unlikely that you'd be repaying this either for refinancing savings or if you had extra cash to pay it off, you probably wouldn't be paying this off early anyway. So the non-call option in this case, I don't think is terribly important or restrictive for the city in this option. So Classic, again, is the cover bid, or in this case, actually, the winning bid, because they complied with all the requirements that you had asked for. And then you can kind of look through there at what the others were. On the next page here, you can see the debt service schedule. That was the schedule that Mr. Kelty went over when he was talking about the INS budget and adopting this. These are the, essentially, the payments that we looked at on a, on a seven-year basis, a little bit of an increasing there, some debt pays off, and then you have a little bit of growth in tax base. This is essentially a size to maintain your existing debt service rate without having to increase. So that was the idea here. So that's that three-point-seven from Classic plugged in to see what we, we look like there. When we went out originally, we were assuming a higher interest rate of roughly closer to five percent. Because interest rates came in so much lower, we were actually able to go back under the same debt service structure and increase it from a one-point-two-six million that we had asked the banks for to one-point-two-nine million. So you're getting thirty thousand dollars because of the lower interest rate that goes to the city to be able to fund the projects that you're looking to fund, and the bank was willing to, to agree to that as well. So last page here is the sources and uses. That just shows you that of the one-point-two-nine million, there are issuance costs of about twenty-five thousand. The remaining coming to the city's project construction fund is at one million two hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Assuming that you do decide to take action tonight to approve this, we'd be in a position to close with the Attorney General's Office on September ninth, that's when this will fund for the city. You can put the money into your depository account, you can put it wherever you want and start earning interest while you spend those funds down on the project, so you can earn interest on it up to the bond yield while you wait to have those projects funded. So happy to answer any questions, but congratulations, obviously. Banks are a little bit skittish in this market, so receiving this number of bids and quite frankly, high-quality bids is a testament to the city and your strong credit and people wanting to work with you.
To me, it seems to be a very competitive interest rate that Classic Bank submitted. If I understood what you said correctly, in order to take advantage of this competitive rate, we have to have action tonight?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And this is a seven-year note?
Yes, sir. Under state law, seven years is our max on those tax notes.
I have one question. Uses of funds, cost of issuance, what's that?
So, the specifics of the cost of issuance would be, the Texas Attorney General has a fee, we have a fee, bond counsel has a fee.
Closing costs.
It's exactly the same, it's closing costs, yes, sir.
So that includes all the fees together?
That's all the fees, there's no fees after this. Well, with the exception of the bank is charging you two hundred dollars a year for the paying agent fee, that will be a seven-year, two hundred dollars for the next seven years. The paying agent essentially takes the payments twice a year from the city to pay off the bondholders. But beyond that, everything is incorporated in this twenty-five thousand dollars, there's no additional fees above and beyond that. But yes, it's akin to a closing cost with mortgage, yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions?
I have a question for the future. You said the banks didn't want to hold it over the weekend. Is that because we have a Monday meeting? Is that what was driving this?
Yes, sir. If you'd had a Tuesday meeting, we could have asked for bids today, and it would have been twenty-four hours, but opposed to, you know, we asked for bids at ten AM on Friday with a Monday evening meeting. I mean, if the market moves, they lose money, right?
So, exactly. So if there was a bigger swing in this, it might be advantageous for us to do this on a Tuesday or something in the future.
Yes, that's right. If you're able to have a special meeting, and this was, you know, potentially a larger issue where a swing of a basis point or two might mean a pretty significant swing in your debt service, if you were able to have that special meeting, that could be advantageous.
So is that something that, when, when we come to you guys again, I may be here, may not be here, and probably won't remember at that point, that recommendation from somebody that does this, hey, let's look at this on Tuesday or Wednesday, so that we don't put the banks in the precarious position and get the best bank for our buck?
And it's an excellent point that you bring up. It's sort of market-dependent in some cases. A lot of times, a bank won't mind holding it over the weekend. We're just in this market that's a little bit, yeah, fluctuate's a good word, right? That's maybe a polite word. It's moving more so potentially than it usually has. I was actually curious, we didn't, we didn't want to let Chase know that even though they were a little bitter, they weren't winning until today, because I was just curious, not that we would have accepted it, but I was curious to see what would have happened with their rate if it had gone the other way to benefit the city. Of course, it went, it went up, so that conversation is really, is really moot. But yes, to your point, next time this comes around in the future, that's a discussion that we can have. I mean, I know in your case, it was sort of...
It was a small, small issue, a relatively small bond issue or debt issue.
It's small in this issue, but we may come back to ten million or something.
If we, yeah.
And that, that's a bigger package.
Well, and, and so this is what's called a private placement. Typically, if it was a larger issue for you guys, we would do an open-market sale and we would have had to have price on Monday morning, because they won't hold it. That's where there's a bunch of investors, this is one bank investor. So all that to say, in this case, you're probably okay, a larger issue, if it was a similar circumstance, yes, we can make that note. And going forward, the nice thing about the timing of this is that you can include it in the budget and the tax rate, which you just discussed as well. If we had to wait on a special meeting, we wouldn't have been able, given the August timing, to include it in the tax rate.
Counsel, any other questions or comments for Jennifer, Tim, regarding this agenda item?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
I'll entertain action on agenda item number eleven.
I'll make a motion that we approve the authorization of issuance of sale of city of Rockdale, Texas Limited Tax Note in the principal amount of one-point-two-six million for street reconstruction and park improvements to Classic Bank.
Mayor, before that, second, does he need to change the amount or just leave the amount out?
Do we need to go to the revising?
He referenced the one-point-two-six-zero million, and that doesn't include the two hundred dollars per year, I presume, of management fees, I'll call it.
The actual, like, I think...
Well, it's actually one million two hundred and ninety.
If you can in your motion change it to the one-point-two-nine million, that would, we don't have to reference to the mayor's point, the two hundred dollars a year, but if you could say one-point-two-nine, that's, thank you for catching that, yes, sir.
You got all that? You was changing... Air Pro, Tim Perry, would you like to revise your motion?
Sure. I make a motion, we authorize issuance and sale of city of Rockdale, Texas Limited Tax Note in the principal amount of one million two hundred and ninety thousand for street reconstruction, street reconstruction and park improvements to Classic Bank.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Was that a second?
Yes.
A motion, a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Any no discussion, we'll vote all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item number twelve, consider taking any, Jennifer, thank you. Consider taking any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance amendment to Article three-point-zero-nine flood damage prevention. Oh, Ben?
Hey, Councilman Mayor. So this is an ordinance update, hasn't seen one since nineteen ninety-six, so it is time to get an update on that. So I worked with a flood outreach specialist through the Texas Water Development Board. They actually reached out on behalf of, hey, your ordinance is pretty out of date, we'll help you update it. So I've worked with them over the past couple of months. Not a lot of changes have been made, I'll highlight them for you guys. So the first, in the past, the mayor actually acted as the permit specialist for floodplains. So once someone wanted to develop, they'd actually have to give the mayor's authorization. We're going to change that to how we currently operate, which is myself, the city planner. I did put language in there that I could have a designate, in case you're ever without a city planner, they could just designate that forward. The other changes is FEMA has come out with a online map, it's a base flood engineering map, that essentially, it's a more detailed map from our nineteen eighty-four map that FEMA previously had. We've added language in there that you can reference that on top of the map that we currently have. The other is, previously, we required, there's a base flood elevation, so essentially where the water level is going to rise to, there's going to be a maximum point, that's the base flood elevation. Currently, we require anybody to build one foot over that. We'll get on it later on the agenda, there's a grant we're going for that actually requires two foot. So I propose that change to two-foot base flood elevation above. And then the last is the outreach specialist recommended that we put standards in for recreational vehicles within the floodplain, so we've added that language in there as well. With that, I can field any questions, but those are the proposed changes. With that, I can field any questions, but those are the proposed changes.
Is the grant, you said you'll get into this in another agenda item, to go from one foot to two foot. Do we have any idea in the last five years how that would adversely affected somebody's ability to build? That was able to build because they were in that one foot threshold, but now going to have to go another foot. Do we have any? What's the, what's the kickback or what's the pushback from doing this? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, so I'll answer when we get developers in, they're used to working with either or. There's some rare communities that don't require any build above the base flood elevation, but you always want to require something, and so we required one, but I'll talk about the home program. That builder is used to a two foot building elevation. This wouldn't affect currently built properties, it's just new builds that it would affect.
Okay, so unless you've got the one foot recommend, or we're sticking with the one foot, the next other item you're going to consider taking it to two?
Well, I've already gone ahead and changed this to two.
Okay.
For the next agenda item, because that grant's going to require that we go to two. So I've just precursored it to be in this ordinance amendment.
Okay, this ordinance does take its two foot?
It does.
Counsel, any other questions for Ben regarding this agenda item?
You, you may imagine that they could reference that map. Is it not, is it not aligned with our map?
It's a more detailed version, so I'll use the 84 map as an example. If you look at that map, the whole city limits is not within that map, because at the time, not everything was within the city, and when FEMA did that study, it only looked at the city that was currently existing. So if you pull the new map, which is an online interactive map, it will actually give you the base flood elevation. So instead of, if you look at the 84 map, you'll just see that the designated area, that that's a floodplain. It doesn't give you any depths about where the water is going to rise on estimate. If you actually look at the FEMA map online, it'll give you a rough estimate of this is going to be a one foot flood elevation when it rains every 100 years, because that's how they determine it, they determine it by 100 year floodplain. So once every 100 years, you'll get a really bad rain. And then on top of that, they also have a 500 year map, where once every 500 years, you'll get a really bad rain, and this is what they're predicting.
Statistically.
Yeah, that's the statistics on it. So cities operate under the 100 year.
I don't mean this to get sidetracked, but there's an area of town I think many of us are familiar with, right over to the east of where we live, along Belton and Devilla. And it seems like anytime we have some harsh rains, that area floods significantly, up onto the streets, out of the banks. And I thought at one point we had talked, and I don't think I was even on council, but I thought at one point there was a plan in effect to move those houses out of that zone.
Move the houses up?
Give, I guess, kind of like the new home program, I would guess, but yes.
Along Ham Branch?
Houses along Ham Branch, Memorial Day, probably 10 years ago, some of those homes flooded. There was a couple of them that flooded, which we had to rescue the residents out of because of high, the level of the water, the floodwaters. And I know there were two homes affected, and those homes were on the west side of the street in that area, right over here off of Ham Branch. The east side of that street, I believe not Scarborough, but not Bowser, but. I believe maybe it was Scarborough. But the west side of that street is a little bit higher elevation, and that side did not flood, but that east side, a couple of those homes did flood. Obviously, I wasn't mayor on council back then, so I don't know of any proposed action.
It was.
I just think it would be worth researching that, because if there was a pledge made to those homeowners, what happened to that?
Well, so that was, it was due to Hurricane Harvey, if I can recall correctly, it was before my time here, but I was told about it. And it was not through the city. It was either through the county or below, I'd have to check. And it was an outreach to get those citizens to, essentially they'd buy them out of their property, buy them for what they were worth, so that way they could build a new home elsewhere. And there was not a lot of interest, as in the buyouts, is what I was told.
So that was an option to the homeowner?
That's right, they weren't required to move out, there was just the intent, I think it was about 12 homes, if I can recall correctly, that were attempted to be bought out, so that way they could demo it and they could get a home outside of the floodplain. And I was told by my predecessor that there was not a lot of interest. And so they, they were unable to.
Would that program still be available if these homes have new owners who might be interested?
I'd have to see whoever the agency was that proposed that funding, if they still had it, and if they were willing to move forward with that.
So you think that was disaster relief funding associated with Hurricane Harvey?
It was at that time. So I'd have to see if that funding's still available, it was not city funding that would have done that.
Fair enough. Counsel, any other questions for Ben regarding agenda item number 12? Entertain action on the first reading of this ordinance amendment.
I make a motion that we approve the first reading of the ordinance amendment, Article 3.09 flood damage prevention with the. Changes that have been made.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second, that.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote all in favor of said motion, signify or raise your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item number 13, consider take any necessary action approving the first reading of an ordinance, amending the master fee schedule for solid waste, utility deposits, new meter installs and Patterson Civic Center rentals. Tim?
Um, yes, so the, these be adjustments, I'd ask staff to review all of the fees that we charge and come back with me with some recommendations regarding where we need to be in our, in our solid waste, which is the trash that we pick up. We are finishing this year with projections where we are going to be significantly underwater. Our, our expenses, expenditures to BVR are $899,000. We're making about $822,000, and it doesn't include indirect cost of billing or administrative costs. What we are recommending is increase of, of the utility, the community trash rates pretty much across the board, with individual residential garbage rates going up $2.65 a month, from $15.47 to $18.12. This will allow us to cover all of our costs for solid waste. And then in the Patterson Center, it's been quite a while since the rates have been increased, and we look at what surrounding venues charge. And there are some rates, some venues that charge really exorbitant rates. Our Patterson Center, currently we charge 450. I'm sorry, $450 for one, for a full day rate. And a, we do provide 50% discount on those for local nonprofits. I'm actually proposing two different rates, one for the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then right now, we have, we are virtually booked every single weekend at the Patterson Center. But we have very, very few weekday rentals of the Patterson Center. And what I'm proposing is increasing the rate from $450 to $600, and lowering the weekday rental from $450 to $375. And that would still include a 50% discount for nonprofit local rentals of that. On utility deposits, I'm proposing to increase that from 150 to $200. Basically, the deposits, excuse me, and also deposits on commercial accounts from, that use 2,000, 10,000 gallons from $300 to $400 a month, excuse me, as their security deposit. This security deposit is intended to provide coverage for the city if someone leaves their, leaves balance. This food deposit is supposed to be sufficient to cover that balance, and currently, in many cases, it's not. And so we are proposing to increase that. And then on our meter tap fees, currently, frequently, our meter tap fees isn't sufficient to cover our costs. And so what we're actually proposing is changing that to $100 plus the cost, the actual cost of, of the, of the. Of the meter change out.
I have a question, actually I have a couple of questions. The first one's relative to the solid waste. As opposed to increasing the fees on our citizens, and I see where the cost of BVR is outpacing the revenues, by what, approximately $70,000? Can we not go out and ask for other bids for solid waste disposal companies to try to get a more competitive bid for service, as opposed to just passing this on?
And we actually will, but we have, the contract with BVR is, I think it's for five years.
Three, I think.
Is it three year, three year contract?
It was three, and we're coming to the end of that, so it will be coming back around.
Yeah, we're not, I don't believe that we are close to having that, the end of that contract.
Go ahead.
I can double check, and, you know, this, this will take two readings, so I can verify when that contract comes up for renewal.
Okay.
We definitely will go back out for bids.
Okay.
Regardless, but I'm assuming that we went out for bids the first time, and BVR provided us the most competitive rates available when that, when that went out.
Thank you, my second question was with the Patterson Center, in regards to increasing the fees or changing the fees, those who currently have it booked out already, the next few months, whatever, how long, six months from now, and they're already secured a booking? Will that fee change for those people who've already booked it under the current fee schedule, or will it remain the same?
What I, what I talked to Teresa about was to go through all of the bookings that where people have booked them out over the next, I think it was six months? And let them know that the rate was going up, and they would have like three months to come in and pay their, pay their, the amount that they owe, or within a certain time period. And, and then if they didn't, then they would have to pay the amount, if they booked it, say, a year from now, then they would have to pay the higher amount. So.
Interesting, we will honor.
We'll honor current, current contracts for bookings up for up to a year. For how long?
Year.
For up to a year.
A year.
So if somebody has booked it, and anybody knowing that we're considering this, could come in next week, or next, you know, in the next four weeks before the final reading, and book it, and get it booked at the lower rate. It would be, it is, that rate that we have currently will be honored. Does that make sense?
I was just, is it three months from the, the date that they have booked, or three months from today?
It would be three months from the adoption of the ordinance, and that, and I can be flexible on that, I, I, I mean, I really can. Basically, when somebody comes in and reserves the, reserves the Patterson Center, they are supposed to pay their, the full amount of their booking 30 days, I think 30 days prior to their booking. And most do that, sometimes they, they don't, and it's two weeks before the booking, and if they cancel, we, in the past, we've been refunding all their money. And I basically established a policy that says that they lose their deposit if they cancel, unless we are able to book that to someone else. In other words, if we have it reserved for a Saturday, and somebody else, and they cancel it, then we'll hold their, they'll hold their deposit and their, their funds. And if somebody else comes in and books it that weekend, we're not adding any money, we'll refund 100% of their, of their money. But I'd just say that when somebody has a booking, and they pay their, their deposit, their $200, or whatever it is, deposit to hold their, their, that weekend, and then, you know, two or three other people might come in and want that, but we can't, we can't, because it's already booked. And so if they come in, you know, a couple of weeks before their event and cancel, then it's unlikely that that will, that's the only time we end up having a vacancy, is if it's, something's canceled a week, a couple of weeks before.
I will just express my only concern is that it seems to be renting really well, and maybe we are an economy space, but if we raise our price that much, are we comparing ourselves to a lot of other venues that are now popping up within the county? And it's better to me to have a place that you're using tremendously well, and have a place just sitting there.
So there is, and when I say that there are more, you know, that there's only one other venue that is similarly priced, and that's the Fairgrounds. I haven't been to that venue, so I don't.
It's not, I'll tell you, it's not fairly as nice.
I don't know what, what it looks like, but the next, the next closest venue being priced is the KFC Hall, and I know that that's like 1,500, I think it is, or more, it's, it's significantly more. So we're still going to be less, I mean, obviously, KFC Hall is a lot bigger.
Lot bigger, right.
A lot bigger, but we are less than half, half the price, about a third of the price probably.
I have a little question about the BVR. So we're, we're expected, it's going to cost 899,000, correct? That's what our cost would be to them?
Yes, this, this.
So we're going to shortfall, 77,000, what we think, is that due to people's not paying their bills, or is that?
That's just because of the fact that our.
The city charges as well. We have certain.
Our, our costs. I say, it is just based on the fact that our costs are less than our, our expenses.
So you're saying when we, we entered into a contract two years ago, three years ago, five years ago, whatever it was, and they had a set value to pick up my trash at my house, that we were underneath that, that, that cost? Because every, theirs is a fee base per unit, and we're charging per unit. So you're selling, you're telling me that.
So one of the things that the city.
We agreed to a contract.
When we set our, our rates, that thing that we did not take into account was the other costs that the city has for our recycling center, when we paid for the recycling center, that, that's not covered by any costs, so you just pays that out of the general, pays that out of the enterprise money. And there's a, there's a couple of other costs, you look at, if you look at the budget on page.
Is that the dump facility out by the water? Which one are we talking about?
It's the trash bins at the city yard off Mill Street, I think.
So they, they actually, we have, we have free service at certain locations as far as for city, for city waste. But for sanitation, we have advertising, there's an advertising cost, there is a recycling center, which is 39,000. There's sanitation plant, it costs for 22,795. We have $834,000 is for individual. Individual.
So in a nutshell, all the, all the fees that are assessed to the city for our dumpsters, for this, recycling, whatever, all of that was not taken into consideration and able to have been passed on to each.
When the original contract was split. So that will be on the next.
I'm sorry?
That will be next time we take in bids.
Well, I'd like to, I think the.
Go ahead and finish, I have two things I want to say. I don't know about the rest of you, but the number one phone call that I get complaining about an issue in our town, it's with our trash service. And typically, it's because of an unwillingness to take yard debris. And we want people to have nice yards and nice places, and yet we're kind of putting another hoop in, in, in the way. And that, that's my comment on, on the trash rates. On the Patterson Center, I would be, maybe be a little contrarian, is that I'm just overwhelmed with the Patterson Center. Not overwhelmed, I just feel like, when are we going to start planning some upgrades, some renovations? To me, it's just, it's, it's just a blah facility.
Yeah, so in the budget for this year, we do have funding in there for sound dampening, and we have funding for round tables and tib cloths. There's nothing for the flooring, as far as that's concerned, it is still going to be relatively blah.
Well, that's something we could definitely.
Like, like I say.
Consider in next years, year after next, but.
There, there, I mean, there is some funding in there, and so I don't know what we would want to look at improving.
You, you made a comment to, for 501(c)(3)'s or nonprofit to cut those fees in half, is that right?
Yes, so currently, currently, our, we, if a nonprofit wants, a local nonprofit wants to come in and reserve the Patterson Center, they pay half price.
So.
So we would still, we would still do that.
About every other corner you turn around, there's a nonprofit in this town, and if it's not on that corner, the church is there, the church is next door to the nonprofit. So you're going to find that every, I mean, almost every rental you get, besides the one I give you, is half.
Or weddings.
Huh?
Or wedding receptions.
Very few, though, but very few wedding receptions happening at Patterson Center. Most of your things are going to be discounted at half. Can we, instead of just arbitrarily saying we're going to give you half if you're a 501(c)(3), could I come in here and apply for hot funds that we could apply to that? And not just arbitrarily say, hey, we're going to give you half just because you brought a piece of paper from the state that anybody can get?
We could do that.
I want to make it a little bit harder on them, just to come take half the money.
That should be an easier report to write, you know, pay half.
You know, before we get to the second reading, I will do a number of things for you. I will go ahead and put together a summary of all the venues in the area and what they actually charge, so you can compare that. And two, I can put together a report that shows over the last 12 months, these are the, these are the rentals that we've had.
Renters?
Renters that we've had for what type of activities, and whether they have been discounted or not. I don't think the number is as great as you think.
Oh, when you just put in this meeting, it just got greater. Oh, when you just put in this meeting, it just got greater. Because the reality of it is, if, 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 if Aaron Perry Builders is going to come rent that Patterson Center, I can come up to you with a piece of paper that says I'm a 501(c)(3) of some sort, I can tag somebody along with me and come in there and get it for half the price. But if I have to come up here to that podium and ask for it, it's going to be a whole different story. It's just my two cents.
I applaud your effort for trying to get weekday traffic. I'm not sure if, I'm just not sure it's going to work. I mean, I'm not sure people are going to have their events during the week, but I, I do like the effort. I mean, I do like to give them a reason.
That's what we give a shot.
No, that's what I'm saying, I like the effort.
I've done this in, in other cities, and it doesn't increase weekday traffic. It does some, you might see a 10% increase, because it, it's not like all of a sudden, you know, weekdays are going to start filling up. Um, and there's a cost we have, you know, to, to do that, because we have to have it cleaned and...
Oh, absolutely.
Have it maintained and...
I like to do it every day, you know?
And everything else, so...
I have, I have one question on process cycling, process value recycling. We pay, we pay for the, the recycling dumpsters, right?
Yes.
Okay.
At the, at the yard?
Do we get anything back on that?
We charge each citizen a fee to use them.
Right, but I mean, they're, they're selling, they're...
No, there's no charge for citizens to...
It's a charge for them to offer that service to us with no return.
And then they sell all the recycled material and we pay to have it taken off?
That's correct.
I know that there's...
All bids that you get.
Over the last, over the last five years, 10 years, um, the recycling market has been way, way down. We actually did curbside recycling in, in another city, and it generated citywide with curbside recycling, about $10,000 in revenue.
Yeah, no, I say it's, it's a little...
So for the amount that was recycled there, that number would probably be significantly less.
Is that annually?
Yes.
I want to correct my previous statement. We charge as a city for our citizens to go to the Mill Street Yard and dump additional trash in the dumpsters there in the Mill Street Yard, not the recycling. Is that $10 a carload, truckload?
It was 35.
Um...
Truckload is 27, and it goes up from there, and then you have your trailer, you, they're priced out at single axle, double axle.
Okay.
I think the double axle is 74.
Yeah.
Are we operating in the negative on that?
That is, based on our revenue, that revenue is, is included in the revenue that we're projecting.
That's in that number?
Yes.
Okay.
The, um, the contract expires December 31st, 2026.
Okay. The recycling thing, the, when they brought these bids to us, every one of them did not want to offer recycling, because it was a losing proposition for, for the trash companies as well.
We took a further step and tried to...
Put it on to the citizens and they didn't want to pay.
And by, we couldn't get the signatures to do it. We've, yeah, we gave them a misstep.
The citizens don't want to pay.
All right, I'll make a motion. Go ahead, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the first reading of the ordinance amending the master fee schedule for solid waste, utility deposits, new meter installs and Patterson Center rentals.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'm like, I'm like a second, a second.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
You're going to bring back to us those items?
I bring more additional information.
Any other discussion? If there's no, we'll vote all in favor, said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes, agenda item number 14. Consider take any necessary action, a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve an application for, uh, resolution Langford agreement with the general land office grant, for the general land office grant. Ben?
Mayor, this one you'll like to sign, there is no city match for this grant. Um, so what it is, we can get up to $300,000. What it will do is in the comprehensive plan, you can actually start to implement those codes through a code rewrite. There has to be a hazard mitigation aspect of it, which we have in our comprehensive plan. We'll be working closely with the grant administrator on if anything small needs to change with more hazard mitigation added. But what it will do is it could potentially fund a code rewrite up to $300,000. They typically run around $200,000, depending the scope of work that you want to do. Um, I will make a side note to counsel, the planning commission and staff are going to start working towards a code rewrite in case we do not get this grant funding, or if it takes a while. But in the meantime, we want to at least apply for this and see if we can get that funding.
Counsel, any questions for Ben? If there's no questions, I'll entertain action on agenda item number 14.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor to approve a petition for the resolution for Langford agreement for the general land office grant.
I'll second.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote all in favor, said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item 15, consider take any necessary action authorizing the city manager to reimburse $10,000 in donation from Shannon Carnegie for the Fireman's Memorial Park improvements. Tim?
Uh, last year, Shannon made donations to the city of Rockdale for improvements at Fireman's Memorial Park. Um, they were from three different companies that she's involved with, 77 Crossroad Storage, um, DBA Original B Brothers, and Billy Buck's Deer and Exotics. Um, last month, she sent an email asking that the money be refunded to her. Um, you know, Ms. Carnegie indicated that she had lived in and still has friends in the Kerrville area who were impacted by the recent flooding and wants to send funds there. Um, and then she will be responsible for all tax implementation, implications of the refund the city makes to her if approved by council.
Yes, she did clarify to myself and Tim in an email, the reason for the request of funds, which was redistribute those funds basically to flood relief and one of the Center Point volunteer fire department down in the heavily impacted flood zone in Kerrville area. And she also indicated in her email that in the future, she would consider again redistributing donations to, to these funds as well, so... Counsel, I entertain any action on that agenda item?
Is there any tax implications for the city for this?
There's no tax implication, implications for the city. They would potentially be ta, if she, if she claimed it on her last year's, if she planned that donation on last year's taxes, she will have to amend that.
That would be her responsibility.
Did the city provide her anything to do?
The city will, the city, I think, will provide her with a 1099, how did we make that payment?
At this point, we have not issued anything tax wise.
But I mean, if we, if we send her the check back, at the end of the fiscal year, will we send her a 1099, as, as far as that payment is concerned, to her?
I'll clarify, but I don't think, because it's a donation, I don't think we have to do a 1099. She's not a vendor, it's a donation loan, so there's a difference between being a contractor or a vendor and getting a 1099. I'll object, but as far as I'm concerned, she...
I would think she wouldn't be, she's not gaining any income, she's only receiving back what she donated, it's not a capital gain, so to speak for her.
So what was your, some reason it was supposed to send it to?
She wants to redistribute that donation to the heavily impacted flood area down around Center Point, Kerrville.
Can we just not send the check herself?
I...
I'm sorry?
She would need to...
Go ahead, Barbara.
This is normal?
I've never had it happen before, but I understand what she's...
She would need to make that donation for her to get that tax write-off? So she, I mean, we can't just like, oh, on the, you know, word of you, we're sending this down there. We have to refund, and she needs to do it herself.
When was it made?
What's that?
When was the donation made?
Um, it was last fiscal year, like October, August.
August 2024.
So we can know that the funds weren't used or anything?
You know that because they were in the flood balance of the Parks Grant Fund we designated in its restricted month.
They, yeah, they have not, they have not been spent.
Yes, specifically earmarked for Fireman's Park, that's correct.
What I would recommend is sending a cover letter back with those checks indicating that pursuant to her request, you're sent returning them, and she is responsible, I know she has said this to Tim, but indicating in that letter that she's responsible for all tax implications with regard thereto.
We don't know if she wrote it off as a tax, tax deduction, she could have.
Counsel, I entertain action.
I'll make a recommendation, um, that we reimburse $10,000 in donation from Shannon Carnegie, and that we, um, also send a letter ad with the reimbursement.
A motion on the floor from Councilmember Sarnes, is there a second?
My second, that's...
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? All in favor, said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Uh, it is 7:01 PM. We're now going to convene an executive session. Order sections 551-072 and 551-074 of the Texas Government Code to, one, deliberate about purchase exchange lease of, or value of real property for the purpose of commercial development for the city's six acres located 766 West Kent, West Highway 79 in Rockdale. And item B, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal, dismissal of the city manager. We are now adjourning from regular session into executive session at 7:01 PM. Yes, sir.
That Fireman's thing last year, I got pretty drunk and donated too much money.
It's some realtor, he can't trust any of them. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You know?
Uh, here's your question. I have a... Okay. I have 7:57 PM, we will reconvene in open session. Counsel, is there any action to be taken coming out of executive session?
No, sir, no action.
No action to be taken, counsel, is there any other business to attend to in this meeting? If there's none, we are officially adjourned at 7:01.